I know it's good to have you back here. But then I said for the last meeting.
There he is.
Jerry.
So Trixie's not here tonight, that's rare.
So you know she isn't.
What are you doing? Sweating. Big guys like me both like soft-serve ice cream and that stuff. Okay. Okay, good luck tonight, Shira. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Decal Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this Monday, July 15th. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Here.
Oh, clarity. Pina Graham.
Here.
Stoker. Wright.
Here.
Vice Chair McMahon.
Here.
Chair Maxwell.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Move by McMahon. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll move to the approval of the minutes from July 1st, 2024. Again, if there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve. So moved by Wright, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Pina Graham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the program. If there's anyone that has anything that they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward now. If not, we will move on to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by Charis Acquisitions LLC for amendments to Section 2 of Ordinance 2023-038 to add a data center to the list of permitted uses, increasing the maximum building square footage, and amend the concept plan to accommodate the data center plates, excuse me, site plan with 132-acre subject property located at the northeast corner of Peace and Gerler Road. I understand we have a presentation? Thanks. If you'd like to state your name.
Good evening, staff, board. My name is David Dix. I'm the Vice President of Development for Charis. I'm joined by my team. I have Ivy Miller, also Charis, Matt, our attorney, Bill Bones, our engineer.
Welcome. Do you have, yeah, and if you'd like to just briefly?
Okay.
Okay, oh, okay. So Charis, Charis Acquisitions, we are an industrial developer specializing in data center and cold storage all over the country. We have about 1.5 billion in production between completed projects and upcoming projects in the development pipeline. This project, again, we're proposing seven buildings, 2 million square feet, data center, we got the updated site plan. And beyond that, I'm available to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a staff version, staff report?
Give me more.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Matt Norton. I'm the, I'm a partner with the law firm of Burke Warren McKay and Saratella, and we're the attorneys for Charis Acquisitions. Just wanted to summarize our requested relief here tonight. We're not seeking a zoning change. This property was previously next in 2023, and at that time was zoned to the PD-I Plan Development District, and we want to keep it there. Really, the only changes we're asking for are to add data centers as a permitted use in the, in the approving ordinance, that's Ordinance 2023-038. As I'm sure you know, when property is zoned in the PD-I district, the city council establishes the, the uses, and various industrial uses were established by the approving ordinance. Data Centers was not one of them, probably should have been at that time in light of the trend of development, so we'd like to clean that up with this amendment we're asking for this evening. We'd also like to increase the allowable building square footage from 1.645 million to 2 million. We're at the concept plan stage. We acknowledge that for an actual development, we have to come back through here for the preliminary and final development plan. In terms of compliance with the zoning standards, we've stated how we believe we comply with those standards in our application, but just real briefly, in terms of conforming with the comprehensive plan, the city's comprehensive plan identifies this property and the surrounding area here as appropriate for industrial development in the southeast portion of the city. The goals in the comp plan for these industrial areas include to encourage research facilities and other light industrial uses, including data centers. So we're really on all fours with the comp plan here. Data Centers are an enumerated permitted use in several of the industrial districts already, so we believe it's appropriate to add that permitted use to this portion of the PD-I district. The existing uses around us are largely industrial or vacant land that is planned in the comp plan for industrial. And then finally, we'll, we're confident that there's adequate public facilities for, to serve the data center here, including water and sewer. We're working with ComEd on electrical service. Data Center does require a fair amount of power to operate. Traffic-wise, data centers are low-traffic generators compared to other industrial uses, so we have adequate road service to this site. And that concludes our initial presentation. We're glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. There's staff report in your packet, and David and Matthew went through the background. As mentioned, last September, the city annexed this property, 132 acres, and rezoned it to light or heavy and PDI Plan Development Industrial District. There was not an end user at that time. There was just a proposal, and there was a concept plan approved at some of your screen that showed about 164, 1.643 million square feet. There was not an end user, was not known what the exact impact was. So a plan was just shown that showed the adequate setbacks, some stormwater detention, parking, how much building might be able to fit on there, so. And then they've come back now with a plan originally that was in your packets, and there's a revision regarding the ComEd substation. The plan that was submitted showed a 17.5-acre ComEd substation at the southwest corner of the property, and then seven buildings, data center, each 250,000 square feet, two-story. There was some concern about the location of the data center. Obviously, it's needed to supply this in the ComEd region, too. We met, the applicant met with ComEd, and we met with them last week, and the location of the ComEd substation was shifted from the southwest corner of the southeast portion of the site and increased a little bit to 20 acres. So they still maintain their seven buildings, same square footage, 250,000 square feet each, meets all the setbacks that were in the ordinance approved last September, shows detention, couple access points off Gerler Road, and again, stormwater detention that's on a conceptual basis meets the requirements. As noted, the ordinance last September approved required a preliminary final plan, go back through the process, so you'll see this plan again with more detail, including architectural renderings, landscaping, other details regarding the plan. So as mentioned, we agree with the change in the location of the substation. We wanted to maintain that campus look as you go to South and Peace Road to the roundabout. It's a very attractive look there, so we want to maintain that and all along Gerler, too. So we approve of this conceptual plan at this stage. In terms of any public input, we did receive, it was in your letter from Jerry Kuzinski with Chicago West Business Center, developer of the area out there, had concern about the data center location, and we did send him the revised plan, and he indicated that looks much better, so he seems to be satisfied with that. And again, once they get to the preliminary stage, there'll be more details showing landscape screening, which we do require, of course, and within the site also, and all the setbacks are met. They did mention that the buildings along Peace Road, when they come in, will be treated with high-end, you know, materials. You won't see the back of the building or, you know, too negative of stuff, so they'll be very cautious about that, what is exposed to the roadways. So as mentioned by Matthew, the comp plan does call for industrial for the site. We encourage data centers in there in that section of the comp plan, so it meets that. I did revise a sample motion with the date of the revised plan that's in front of you, so we'd recommend approval. The sample motion is there, and we did get a, I should mention, two additional comments from a neighbor out there this afternoon, from Deb Ritter, 11984 Gerler Road. She lives here, one-acre lot, noted some, I guess, pros and cons. She did like the fact that it won't be a manufacturing, distribution, less trucks, which will obviously be the case. Just concerned about lighting of the site, which required a certain amount of lighting on the property. And again, there'll be a preliminary plan that's submitted, which will landscaping setbacks, et cetera. Now, she's looking at the original plan that was mailed out, not the revision, so this is the one she was looking at. She's down here. This is Webster Road. She's right across the road. There was a road proposed there with the revision. That is not there anymore, so there's no road across her. There'd be a commutation and detention facility. So that's provided. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We have Zach Gill, our city engineer, Bill Nicholas, city manager, Bob Burdell, assistant city manager, if there's any questions from us.
Thank you, Dan. We did have one speaker request form, Roy Jones. Did you want to step forward and speak? If you could say your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Roy Jones, and I live in Earlville at 4462 East, South, or East 1251st Street. I just want to say that in considering, you know, this 132 acres that was annexed last September by adding as permitted use data center, I wanted to address overlapping concerns in light consideration for future planning by asking, why is it so easy to allocate land for warehouses but so hard to dedicate significant prairie restoration areas or conceptualized land use for grid elements such as publicly-owned agrivoltaecs? Working on further data center proposals, we're closer to falling out of line with best practices in land management stewardship and reluctantly closer to recognizing the MO of DeKalb is corporate sponsorship. Residents of DeKalb County see investment company power projects blooming on small parcels, but where's the residential benefit without us holding a core value of energy independence? Planning and zoning thus far is giving a perpetual lease of our land and resources to out-of-state entities at a flat rate with the promise of many jobs. However, when looking at the population of DeKalb and knowing workers in the city commute from across the county, few jobs actually arrive with these data centers, which seems like a small promise to me, and it seems like a bad deal for all of us when we're kind of being nickel and dime through these anti-discriminatory water usages. We need to move past this warehouse phase of investments and on to the opportunities of prioritizing infrastructure investments in renewable, self-sufficient microgrids belonging to the municipalities of Illinois, especially when global investments in renewable power and grids overtook fossil fuels in 2023. At a time when ex-urban communities are siphoning water from the Great Lake, we're dealing with land use and energy consumption that collides with ecological water replenishment and terrestrial tipping points in light of the water and electricity intensity of data centers. It's upsetting that there is insufficient public consideration allocated to sustain ecological sources for water and energy, including protections for shrinking wetlands and significant commitments to prairie restoration to mitigate existing warming that is already happening in DeKalb County. So all this is to say, I believe we need to reprioritize now and recognize the duty we have going forward, steward existing ecological systems which progenerated our settlements by working to ensure real energy equity through environmental security. And I'm in attendance today to ask the commission, the residents and all of us, really, what are we doing surrounded by field corn and warehouse jobs when we could prioritize a stewardship that, you know, furthers in energy equity, food security, and invest in a sustainable city? Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the matter? If not, I'll open the public, or close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission.
I do have a question about how many jobs would it, would it create? I see some parking spots on these things, so if you have these seven buildings, about how many jobs would it be?
We're estimating it would be...
David, could you go up the mic and, yeah, thanks.
We're estimating it would be 75 to 100 jobs per, per building.
Per building, 75 to 100 per building?
While you're there, if I can also ask another question, just to address Ms. Ritter's concerns. In terms of the way that they're managing it, or you'll manage it, will it be in shifts? She brought up the fact that there would be traffic, but I can't imagine that it's going to be steady or consistent, or?
Yeah, again, each building is very few employees. I mean, some of these may require around, around-the-clock monitoring.
Sure.
But it's, we wouldn't expect more than two shifts.
Okay. And there's a requirement in the ordinance, zoning ordinance from last September, that when they submit preliminary final, there's a traffic analysis submitted that be reviewed by our city engineer fully, so.
Of course.
So I want to acknowledge the comments you made. I think that you bring up some good points, and I think they need to be considered as we move forward, as something that I, is on our mind. This particular area has been set up for light industrial, industrial work, things like data centers. So I think with keeping in mind that we need to continue to make DeKalb a better place for homeownership and life and, and all, I do think that this meets the plan for, for that area. However, my question, it's kind of truthful for Ms. Ritter, I, I'm assuming that the, the substation doesn't require a whole lot of light at nighttime, right? I mean, you've got to have security light and all, but it's not going to be, she's not going to have to worry about light beaming into her house all night.
No, and, and again, we're proposing berms and landscaping along that girly road.
Great. That was going to be my next question.
Any, yes, any, any minimal light, you know, will be offset by any landscaping and burmy that we're going to put up.
And we'll see that in the next plan as it comes forward.
Yeah, it'll be lighting plan, and usually a building would, I think, higher lighting than a, a substation beyond the security lighting needed.
And it's, and it should be focused inward, I would think, as opposed to emanating out, so.
Lighting requirements shine downward, you know, not horizontal across other properties.
Okay.
We have certain levels that they have to stay within.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
What, what kind of, you might as well stay up there. What kind of traffic do you expect at a data center? What, what kind of traffic goes in and out of there?
We did a traffic study, Bill. The, the impacts were very, very minimal. Do we have a number per building, per day?
I could try to find that while you're talking. So it's mostly, is it vendors? Is it employee traffic?
Just employees.
Is it just employees?
Yeah, employees. So that'll be, it'll be car traffic. We wouldn't expect any kind of trucks, semi-trucks.
So we're looking at it being exclusively data-based?
No.
Yes, I've got the numbers for you from our traffic study. A total build-out, so the full 1.75, or, I'm sorry, 2 million square feet, 122 cars in and 100 out at each of the peak hours, a morning peak and afternoon peak. So that's, that's full, full build-out. Call it 125 in and 100 out. And as, you know, Dan had said earlier, we did shift the, you know, we, we had an entrance that was closer to Webster. We shifted that entrance west. It's lined up with Afton right now, so we are projecting, you know, 99% of the traffic is going to come from, you know, that roundabout, hit, you know, head east on Gerler to go right into our site right at Afton, and then, and then leave in that, in that same manner.
Thank you. Thanks.
What kind of security is necessary for this type of data center?
Yeah, our, our proposed vendors that we, we've talked to will require significant, significant security. It probably won't be that much different than the security on the opposite, opposite corner.
True.
Are you building these, built seven buildings? Is it proposed for one tenant or seven different tenants?
Yeah, ideally it would be one, but at this point, we don't, we don't know if it's going to be taken, how it's going to be taken down. We've talked to a, a number of Fortune 10 companies that are interested, that are interested, so we don't know if this will go down one, or two, or three. We don't know at this point.
The ComEd station was shifted. What was the main reason for the shift? What, what can you tell me about that shift?
Well, the city had some concerns about the location of that along Peace Road, right at the entrance to that whole area, as was the concern by Mr. Kuzinski.
Related to aesthetics, right?
Yeah, aesthetics. Because one enters, you know, that's the main end of the site.
More heavily traveled and?
Yeah, with Kraft Heinz under construction. Meta, we want a nice kind of campus look as you're driving south of Peace Road to Gerler Road, so we asked that to be, you know, the size is fine, but moved to more interior location, and they worked with ComEd and the engineer to put that in a little better position. So that was the background of that.
Do that, and will there be any signage facing the interstate toward 88?
We'll comply with, with city standards, but I'm sure there'll be some minimal signage on, on the building.
Okay. Well, but I guess if it's multiples, it could be various on each building.
Pretty good.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
There are no other questions, I will ask for a motion to approve the preliminary plan.
I'll make a motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the city council approval for the amendments to Section 2 of Ordinance 2023-038 and the planned development standards approved by the ordn, the building, oh, I lost my place, sorry, approved by said ordinance to add data center to the list of permitted uses, increase the maximum building square footage from 1,645,000 square feet to 2 million square feet, and amend the concept plan to accommodate the data center site plan dated July 12, 2024, as shown on Exhibit A for the property located at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Gerler Road.
So moved by McMahon. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Becker. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker.
Yes.
Pina Graham.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Vice Chair McMahon.
Yes.
Chair Maxwell.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, a petition by Steve Shipman for approval of variance to Articles 7.06.4B and 7.06.6 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow a six-foot-high privacy fence in a portion of the front yard along School Street for the property located at 960 North 12th Street.
Yes, we have, I'll be speaking for the applicant. He asked that, but, but it's Steve Shipman who's in the audience. He can answer any questions, but this is a variance for a... Get that slide up, Jeff. I said, okay. We don't have the slides, I guess, so I'll just, it's all in your packet here.
Yeah.
Mr. Shipman would like to put up a four, a six-foot-high privacy fence on his lot. It's a corner lot at School Street and North 12th Street. We met with Mr. Ship and then kind of went over what the variance would require. It's a corner lot, so as other corner lots we've seen, it's, does get a little restrictive, particularly if it's a smaller lot or narrower lot, putting up a fence. So there is a, talking to him, we agreed there'd be, do the fence at four feet back from the sidewalk. The home's about 16 feet 6 inches from the sidewalk along School Street. That's where the property line is, so bring it in four feet, which is similar to the variance we had our last meeting, that one on North 14th Street. And then he'd like to bring it in two feet as you go further east there, and then go around some landscaping. He's planning to like to do that. So Steve indicated to me, just wants to have some additional kind of safety and privacy. There's a school, Little John School, right across the street. So looking at this, we felt he met the hardship. It's not really blocking visibility. To the east of the property is an actually detached garage, not a home. You have the school across the street, a lot of open space there, so we felt that granting a variance, but keeping four feet back, so you get a little bit of open space. He can move it down to two feet for about 16 feet, and that was agreeable to Steve for this. So we got the findings of fact in the staff report. Didn't receive any public comments from neighbors, and we'd recommend approval, and the sample motion is prepared in the staff report.
Okay. And with that, if anybody else would like to speak to it? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission.
I think it's, it's, it's pretty typical. We've seen the last couple of meetings where you've got a corner lot, they'd like to, you know, a little privacy.
I get it.
I've got pictures if anybody needed to see them, and you probably have one of yours, too. So, yeah, I mean, I don't see an issue with it.
Anyone else? Okay. If none, I will ask for a motion to approve. I'll make a motion.
I can, I can. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission approve a variance to Articles 7.06.4B and 7.06.6 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow six-foot-high privacy fence in a portion of the front yard along School Street for the property located at 960 North 12th Street, as shown on Exhibit A of the staff report dated July 11, 2024.
So moved by Pina Graham. May I have a second? Seconded by Wright. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Staff reports for her next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting, August 5. We'll have a special use public hearing. You'll see that, an email this week with the link, the background of that. Maybe additional platter subdivision, kind of working on, small one. The second... The second meeting in August would be the 19th, that'll be the first meeting we're going to have at the police department, but we'll communicate that, obviously. There's some upcoming budget meetings with the council in this room on the Monday nights we usually meet, but we'll let you know certainly. And the last council meeting, July 8, they tabled, or continued the platter re-subdivision for that vacant lot on Fairview. There was a couple failed motions, three to three, that were kind of decided, or even some are to the commission. But I think the message was for both parties to work things out and come to a negotiated price, so that's coming back to the meeting next Monday night. We'll see where that's at, and I'll update the commission when happens, so that's all I had.
Who would one talk to about the, the green spaces around the cab? The gentleman spoke earlier about how we allocate the space and...
Well, we have a comprehensive plan that goes in land use. The council did approve a updated sustainability plan, actually a few meetings back, this was worked on by the Environmental Commission, so we have a lot of things in the comp plan, so I think we're addressing a lot of the things that were raised there. That's where you would find that.
The comp plan's readily available on our...
Yeah, it shows open space on there.
Have you had an opportunity to look at the comp plan? The revised, have you, have you had an opportunity to look at the revised comp plan?
No, I was at the meeting, but I haven't found the public copy of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on our webpage, and the sustainability plan's on there, too, so you may want to review that, and, yeah.
There were significant comments made about a lot of the issues you're talking about that were addressed in the comp plan, and I think trying to kind of bring the, the city forward in that area, so if you have an opportunity, it'd be, it'd be a long read, make sure you have caffeine, but, but, but I think you'd find there's some nice things that are happening.
Amazing. I'll have to review it.
Cool.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. If no one else has anything to add, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Wright, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by McMahon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, everyone.